Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 25 July 2022. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Legions? Okay, we're on to item three, Announcements and Committee Reports. A couple of quick announcements from me. COVID announcements, hospitalizations are down, case rates are up. Island Hospital has one COVID onboard. Thirty-second and M, hopefully wrapping that up next week. So, pretty exciting to open up that major artery here in town. There's some, always doing some work on our water lines, and that is continuing over in the Skyline area, this, starting this week. Skyline, Sands Way, and Parkside Drive, and then a little bit of work on the east side of town on Thirty-seventh Court. And as you probably already know, a little bit warm out, and there are some places to cool off in town. Splash Park open until 6:00 PM, opens at 11:00. Library 10 to 6:00, Senior Center 8 to 4:00. That's all from me, and on to Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met just before this meeting. It was council members Cleland McGrath, Walters, and myself, and Planning Director Don Meesmer, and we had a PowerPoint presentation from the downtown Anacortes Alliance Board about their Main Street Initiative. And that is based on revitalizing our downtown with outreach, design, and an eye toward economic vitality, and involving different stakeholders from around the community. So, they gave us an update of what they've been doing and what's to come for them, and they will be presenting to full council here in the next couple of weeks. We also heard from Mr. Meesmer that he will be giving us all a presentation next week that we're looking forward to about planning and community and economic development. So, he'll give us an update on permit numbers and project updates, things that are going on around the city, including what's happening at the MJB property. So, it will be a great one to tune into. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee met last Thursday. We talked largely about the Anacortes Family Center Social Worker Contract, which is on tonight's agenda, so we'll save any recap for then. We talked a little bit about the First Step Center and some of the limitations in their program. That's the center over in Burlington. And then we spent the rest of our time talking about the Housing Action Plan. As everyone may know, there is a survey that has been distributed in utility bills, it's on the web, it's been out on social media. That survey on Housing Options ends Friday, July 31, so we want to encourage people to get that survey returned. And then we also reviewed the draft existing conditions report, the housing conditions report that our consultant, Makers, has prepared associated with the Housing Action Plan. A lot of good stuff in there, and that'll be coming forward soon with the rest of the draft plan. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other Committee Reports? Okay, we're going to move on to item four on the agenda. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody to address the City Council on anything that's not on our agenda. Anybody here in City Hall? And I don't have any attendees online. And nobody had signed up? Okay. Oh, so do you want to comment on something that's on the agenda or just address the council?
I think so.
Okay. Yep, this is, sorry, sorry, yep. If I wasn't clear enough, this is the appropriate moment to address the council. Yep, come on up to the microphone, and if you'd state your name, and if you live in Anacortes, that would be helpful to know, too.
I'm here.
All right. Can you make, turn the microphone on, please, sir? And just the square, blue light on?
Have I got it?
Yep, got you now. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Dave Duff. I live on West Third Street. I wanted to highlight an issue we're having with traffic over in the area. Jeremy's well familiar with it, I've been bending his ear about it. Long story short, we're getting increasing amounts of traffic in the area, primarily due to the amount of development that's occurring up on Rock Ridge and that whole area down the hill toward our neighborhood. So, we've been thinking about the approach that could be taken to alleviate some of that problem. It's just too much traffic for the residential area, and we notice as we look at the street grid in that area, there's a very nice neat grid of streets, almost continuously from the area roughly bounded by Lovricks and Anacotta Road by the airport, except for a short two-block stretch of Kansas Avenue. And again, if you look at the map, you'll see, and some of you I see are nodding your heads up and down, but if you look at the map, you'll see that that is clearly, or was clearly intended, to be the main access for that whole neighborhood. It doesn't exist today, it's really just a patch of weedy trees, and someone has gravled over part of the area as a private parking area. I'd like to recommend that that at least be on the agenda for planning. I understand that it's not going to happen immediately, but I would like to at least get it on the radar screen for consideration and for budgeting in the future. So, long story short, that's what I have to offer. I have a brief set of slides here, if anyone would care for a handout, kind of summarizes the whole thing. I've got some supporting data for this, so if anyone's interested.
Yep, sure, you can bring it on up.
We need a handouts.
And thank you for your testimony. Okay, anybody else would like to address the council? Okay, moving on to item five, our consent agenda, items A through D.
Mayor.
Is that Mr. Walters?
It is. I'd like pull item 5D.
5D, okay.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move reapprove items A, B, 5A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve consent agenda items A through C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, Mr. Walters, item 5D.
Item 5D is the Social Worker Agreement with Anacortes Family Center. I pulled this from the agenda last week because it was on the consent agenda, and I felt like it needed some discussion. Council explicitly said at the adoption of this contract a year ago that we would review how well it's working before we extended it. So, we had that discussion at our Housing Affordability and Community Services Council Committee Meeting last Thursday. I also discussed it with Police Chief Floyd and the Family Center Director Dustin Johnson. In my judgment, and I think the judgment of the committee, the committee at least, at least Carolyn and I would recommend that we move it forward, although Carolyn should jump in if she feels differently. Ms. Cleland McGrath would have pulled this from the consent agenda anyway, because she's a board member of the Anacortes Family Center. So, I do think it's important, we are spending public money here, and as stewards of that money, we need to ensure it's being spent effectively and yielding results. But as Chief Floyd has communicated to us, Anacortes Family Center is providing an important service to the Police Department, and that they are the resource that the Police Department uses to refer people to social services when they encounter them, and they clearly have a need for those social services. I think there's a separate question of whether or not this Family Center contract is able to solve the problem on T Avenue, and I think pretty clearly it's not on its own, but it has value beyond that, and so it's worth continuing this contract for another year.
I appreciate that, that update, and I will say that we could have done a little bit better job from the staff side to time the report with the contract expiring, so...
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I guess, I'm very much in support of the Social Worker Agreement, I really am, but there are some data points that I'm looking to see as a councilperson in discussing, you know, just what types of cases you're seeing, how, from the standpoint of effectiveness, the chief and team and others believe that we're having, and it's just those metrics that I think are important to us, because this is a new, I guess, venture for the city in an attempt to do some good work. You know, from what I've been able to deduce and hear from various staff members, it, we really are starting out with compassion. And, but I'm just looking for a little bit more numbers and to sort of do a presentation of what did we see and what did we learn over this past year. And I'm not sure I have all of that, and, but I want to be very clear that I support the social worker, the work that's being done. I just want to see some data, and I want us to have a discussion about, you know, what effect it truly has had in the opinions of our experts, but also in the opinion of, you know, council and members. You know, I'm open to supporting it, of course I am, but I still want to see those numbers.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I'm going back in my notes, and I can't find the specific date, but in the last couple months, Executive Director Dustin Johnson and our Chief Floyd did a joint presentation with quite a bit of data, talking about all of the, all of the clients that were helped, the number of times that they were approached, what kind of services that they accepted, what kind of services they accepted and then didn't follow through on. It was pretty thorough. I know that there was attached documents, and there was also, that presentations were done. Unfortunately, it wasn't, we could have put it in tandem, a little bit closer on the schedule, right, so that it was all in the forefront of our minds. I agree with that. The only other thing that I would like to add, and I am obviously going to abstain from voting, is that there's, there's a number from our discussion at our last HACs meeting on Thursday, there's a lot of other things that, that social worker and that, that kind of relationship is providing to the community beyond documentation and services that are available, but also training for the library of how to identify folks, how to do de-escalation, because that is kind of a warm, safe place for people who are housing insecure to go to. And so, they're really hitting, it started from really kind of a Parks Department desire, too, so I think it, unfortunately, I think somehow it got not thoroughly explained, but they're really touching on a lot of different departments within the city, so that how it's so important to get those services to the people where they're at, because doing a quick referral or giving a phone number and a piece of paper, that's there, most of those folks are in a situation where they cannot follow through on their own, whether it's they don't have ID, they don't have a cell phone, they don't have consistent ways transportation. So, having that relationship where we can call Nina as a social worker and get her to where that person is, person is, is incredibly important for our community. So, hopefully, if anyone has more questions, I'm sorry, I can't find the date, but I'm sure we can, we can pull that up.
Mayor Miller.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Thank you. I really appreciate that extra narrative. You know, it's a lot of water under the bridge, given everything that's really going on. So, probably just, it would be helpful if in stuff like this, we have sort of like a little data sheet. I totally heard a lot about the wonderful things that were taking place, and so I just want to be very clear that I'm very much in support of it. It's just that sometimes when we're doing a review, that it's good to have some data attached to the back of that. And quite honestly, you know, Ms. Cleland McGrath, just additional work that's happening in our community is a beautiful thing, because there are a lot of communities that are not getting that additional work and training that's necessary, you know, at the library to help people identify. I met one gentleman at a rally that was here in Anacortes that was homeless, oh, two years ago, and, you know, through all those ups and downs of the roller coaster ride, you know, he still calls me at least once a week, and so I, I totally get it. Thank you.
Okay, any other council members wish to comment, or I would entertain a motion, and I got here...
Yeah, one second. I would just say it's February 22nd, February 22nd of this year was that social services contract update.
Thank you. Thank you for that info, appreciate it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think that Mr. Young's points are well taken. The data itself is important. Mr. Johnson, the Family Center Director, indicated to me that he's providing those numbers to the Police Department, I think on a quarterly basis, and can also make those available to council, or we can ask the Police Department to make those numbers available to council. There's more work to be done in this space. I mean, we identified this as an issue a couple of years ago as part of our budget process, not because of the T Avenue issue, that wasn't the problem we were trying to solve at the time. We were trying to solve the issue of people that should have access to human services that we provide in the community, but don't necessarily have that access. And there's more work to be done to make sure that people are getting those services, that people are able to participate wholly in our community, that people are able to get access to housing if they have problems accessing housing. So, this isn't the end-all, be-all of this, and we ought to have more conversation with it later as we, as we come up with additional recommendations to grow out of our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Meeting, or, or any other committees that are able to identify relevant human services needs. But at the same time, this is what we have available to us at this moment, it's working, and we should keep it moving forward for at least one more year. So, I move approval of the Social Worker Agreement, number 21061, IDS 0001, as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract modification of Social Worker Agreement. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Abstain.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item six, which is a closed-record decision hearing, which my, our attorney and Planning Director will remind me that I believe that means that only parties of record may testify at this particular hearing. So, who's gonna, Mr. Meesmer? Okay, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to take just a moment to introduce Mr. Nathan Goldschmidt. Nathan has been the project coordinator on this particular project since the application was submitted, and I'm sure he's going to do a great job for us this evening. Take it away, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer, and thank you, council members. It's nice to meet you all. Let me pull up my presentation.
Yeah, I'm probably a little bit closer to the mic there, Nathan.
All right, so the project that I'm going to be discussing today is for a renovation in addition to the existing Anacortes Readiness Center. Let me move this a little bit. The agent on behalf of the property owner has requested a conditional use permit for the construction of an addition and renovation to the Anacortes Readiness Center. The proposed addition includes a 3,600-square-foot building addition with three new classrooms, a fitness room, and a corridor which will link those classrooms and fitness center to the main building and the exit. The renovation work will also include alterations to portions of the existing building, including new toilet shower rooms, kitchen, conference room, mother's room, multi-purpose room, a new ADA lift, and they're planning on doing seismic upgrades throughout the building as well. The applicant is Mr. Clint Treat. For some background for the project history, pre-application meeting was held on April 26. Conditional use permit application was submitted on May 3 and deemed complete on May 9. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 31, where the applicant described the project proposal and how it would help them meet their goals. A notice of application and hearing was held on, or submitted and published on June 7, and the comment period for that ended on June 29. One thing that I'd like to note is that the City Council recommendation document states that the comment period ended on July 29. That's just a typo. It ended on the 29th of June, and this will be corrected, and the recommendation submitted to the mayor for signature. And then the last stage that we've been to prior to this closed hearing is the Planning Commission Meeting and Public Hearing on July 13. Here's the site plan for what they're proposing to do. Pardon me. On the northeast corner, they're planning on installing a new bioretention facility to treat 4,425 square feet of replaced impervious surface, so they're trying to become more in line with the Department of Ecology's onsite water quality standards. On the northwest corners, where they're proposing to install new mechanical equipment and house that within fencing, and in the northeast corners, where they're proposing to do their addition, it's the straight polygon there. Here's a close-up of their proposed addition. There are the three classrooms, two of which are 620 square feet, and one of them on the left there is 600 square feet, and on the left is the fitness room or the exercise room, which is 641 square feet, and you can see on the bottom is that corridor linking those rooms to the main building and the exit. Here are the elevation profiles from the east and the north. Something to note is on the north elevation, that black polygon is where on the building they're proposing their addition. The reason why we're here is because the Anacortes Readiness Center is within a residential zone, the R4 zone, and is considered a public safety facility. So, public safety facilities are conditionally approved within the R4 zone through the conditional use permit application process, so this is one of the last steps along the permit process. Some of the takeaways from the project, I just mentioned this, but public safety facilities are permitted in the R4 zoning with a conditional use permit. The new facility meets the conditional use permit and site plan review criteria. On-site stormwater treatment will be improved by constructing a bioretention facility. Proposed addition, the proposed addition is not anticipated to increase building occupancy, but proposal is in compliance with the R4 form and intensity standards, and only one comment was received during the public comment period, and that comment just stated that they would like the construction to occur during the city allotted, or city permitted construction hours, so, yeah. Minimum, or minimal public input on the project. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit, and staff recommends, based upon the application, the findings of fact, let me move this a little bit so I get the wording right, finding of fact and conclusions of the staff report, we recommend that the City Council approve the conditional use permit. Thank you, guys, and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, council. Any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Goldschmidt. That distilled everything nicely. I did receive a phone call today from former City Council Member Erica Pickett with some concerns about the fencing and the barbed wire and the razor wire on top, which is already there. I saw, I went by the facility today, and it is allowed, even though it's prohibited in the city in general, but as a sensitive government facility for homeland security purposes, it is permitted, and Mr. Meesmer was kind enough to respond to my email about that right away today. My question is, so in that, in that, in that rule, the facility operator must demonstrate security needs cannot be reasonably met with other fence types. So, I don't know, and I know this is a little late in the day, I don't know if that has happened. I mean, I, it probably happened when they permitted it to begin with, I'm guessing. And also, the other point there is that visibility to the general public warrants greater application of the prohibition on, on barbed wire fencing, and it is a very high visibility area. So, I'm bringing this up because it was brought up to me, and also just the thought of, you know, fences in our town, and how they look, and the impression that they give, and what kind of city we are, how much high, that kind of high security, that really forbidding sort of prison yard-type fencing is, is warranted. So, I wanted to bring that up and, and see if anyone else had, had thoughts on that.
That is a good point.
Mayor Miller.
That you're right, you know, it's not allowed in our code for, for a good reason, but also, according to the applicant, it's necessary to house that mechanical equipment, and they made their case during the pre-application meeting for it. I'm hoping that the, I'm not sure if the applicant is on, on the Congress, or on, online here, Greg, but you may do a better job of explaining the necessity for, for that barbed wire. I'm not sure if, if Mr. Meesmer, if you have any additional thoughts on that.
Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We have had a couple of instances come up where this exception was applied, and really what it boils down to is the sensitivity of the equipment and the necessity to make sure that, for instance, mechanical equipment, generators, things like that, you know, this facility needs to make sure that they're not going to be tampered with at any time, and that this facility needs to be able to run at any time. So, I think that's the real issue for us here with having that barbed wire, or the constine wire, I like to call it, on the facility.
Thank you, that's definitely helpful. I just think that it's unfortunate that there's not a different way of just having a, you know, a different kind of fence that's not so forbidding, and, you know, that sticks, I'm not an engineer, but anyway, just for the record, it's unfortunate, I think it's unfortunate.
If I might, Mayor. And we can certainly look at possible options as we start, there are a couple of code issues that I'll be bringing up in the next month or so for council to think about, and one of them is fencing and how we deal with fencing, so this could be one of those conversation topics.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, and that's, I'm kind of curious about that, because it's, that, the applicant in this situation makes, it makes a lot of sense, but is there a way to, if, if there is a large fence or an extensive amount of coverage, is there a way to kind of obscure it with landscaping? I don't know if this, in this situation, they may need it visible so that no one can hide, but I think it's come up in other areas of town, when it, when that, when a fence that's six or seven feet tall and solid, how do we obscure it for the neighboring properties and the street to kind of, to make it a little bit more agreeable as passersby's and, and folks? So, I think that would be a good thing to further discuss.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, I just want to chime in with my colleagues. I totally understand the necessity of having a secure facility, I really do. What would be interesting, though, is just to be able to explore what other options that would not limit or compromise the security that's necessary in order to keep the building and its contents safe. So, I think it would probably be very good if we could have that additional conversation, or as, I think, Mr. Meesmer, if I heard you correctly, you know, there are other things that may come up as this process comes along, but that may be something for, to look into deeper, because I'm sure razor wire is not the only option, maybe the best, most economical option. I'm just saying that type of discussion, if we could have it, it would not only allay some of the concerns of the community, but aesthetically, how it could fit within what we already have. There's a whole bunch of kids across the street from that, lots of stuff, so if we could just look into it, I think, and if it ends up being just absolutely what we need to do as a country, as a area, then that's what it is. But I would love that idea of looking deeply and looking... But I would love that idea of looking deeply and looking at what other options and what we could do to help mitigate that thing.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I had a similar concern around just the chain link fence itself, not necessarily even the barbed wire, although that obviously makes it worse, but the chain link fence rules that we have in our code, that we adopted in 2019 prohibit chain link fencing in a couple of places, but would otherwise allow it here. Now, barbed wire is that, that other aspect which I think requires, is, is the bit that requires the departure. Or, actually, in this case, Mr. Meesmer can chime in, maybe it's not even a departure, but in other instances, as Ms. Cleveland McGrath points out, we do allow departures for over height, and we require landscape buffering, or some other mitigation to deal with the overheight departure. So, what about in this instance? What if we required as a condition of permit approval, some landscape buffering somewhere between the sidewalk, or between the property line and that, that new fence location? I'd like Mr. Meesmer's, or Mr. Goldschmidt's opinion on that.
Either one. Go ahead.
Mayor, if I might.
Yep.
Couple of things I'd like to bring up. One, I, I appreciate previous council member Pickett's comments in regards to fencing, but I'm afraid I need to remind the council that Ms. Pickett is not a party of record to the closed record decision hearing, and that comment was not made prior to the close of the planning commission hearing. Having said that, we've been very successful in working with clients in trying to get things like this done, and so I think that we could probably work with the applicant and come up with some screening techniques that would limit visibility, and I think probably help with the community vision on this, but yet would not adversely impact security purposes on that.
And if I might continue, I think Mr. Meesmer does a, a real service in pointing out to us the value in avoiding ex parte communications. However, I didn't have any communications with Ms. Pickett, so I just came up with this on my own. The, the, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we impose as a condition, a requirement for landscape buffering. Mr. Meesmer, would you agree that that could be included in this decision?
If the council wanted to add an additional condition, we could certainly work the language out on that.
Something fairly flexible, somewhere in that distance between the sidewalk and the facility, between the new fencing, but something that could accomplish our objective of screening it.
Yeah, I, I think we could have a condition that would state something of the, I'm gonna try this out here. The applicant shall provide landscaping somewhere between the sidewalk and the fencing at the director's discretion that does not impact security.
And maybe it could even be in the right-of-way, I think they, they maybe use that part of the yard there.
Sure. If, if that's adequate to the council.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Carter.
Without trying to speak for the applicant, I feel that they would be happy to place some kind of pretty fence along the sidewalk on the outside of the grass there, all the way around. Because the way it is now, people constantly going through there in the parking lot.
But ideally, we'll get some words down that would be acceptable, and I didn't write down all those words that Mr. Meesmer came up with.
I'm betting Mr. Franciac has it.
Because, I don't, go ahead, Mr. Franciac.
I, I didn't get all of that on the record, sorry.
We can pull it off of the recording.
Yep.
All right. Well, I'll still need a motion from council with at least an attempt at that wording, if we want to move this forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Just really quickly, you said, you suggested the word landscaping, right? And, because I heard Mr. Carter say some sort of fence, which I don't, I think would prefer landscaping, but, you know, not a big deal.
A pretty hedge.
Pretty hedge, okay, okay.
I can, I can, I can kind of verbalize this a little bit more for you. The applicant shall provide a landscape screening somewhere between the sidewalk and the fencing that does not impact security.
At the discretion of the planning director.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now I'll just need somebody from council to attempt to put that into a motion.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
I move to approve the conditional use permit dash 2022 dash 0003, subject to the staff recommended, recommended conditions, and the one additional condition from the planning director regarding landscape, landscaping and obscuring the fence. Approval as proposed by the staff report on record with that other thing added in.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Cleveland McGrath, the second by Mr. McDougal, to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the staff recommendation conditions in addition to the recommended change as part of tonight's record. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Abstain.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good discussion. We are going to move on to public hearing, and this is a public hearing for amending the 2022-2027 capital facilities plan. This is a discussion item with some possible action. Mr. Hoagland, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. So, the public hearing on the CFP amendment tonight, I have just a couple of slides I want to go through, just real, real briefly. As a reminder, we, the city, in order to amend the CFP is required to have a public hearing, and that's after a two-week notice period, which we have, which we have run on our website and in the Anacortes American. And the, those requirements are outlined here in Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter There's two items that we have for your consideration in the amendment tonight. First one is in the transportation CFP, and it's the 32nd Street and M Avenue roundabout. We initially had this budgeted for 2022 for some preliminary design at $50,000. Earlier this year, the, I'm sorry, and that was with grant funding, earlier this year, the grant that we had applied for was approved, so that allowed us to get started on the full project. That was a $1.6 million project funded primarily with grants, but also with $200,000 in impact fees. The impact fees are to cover costs that the grant would not cover, so I do want to apologize for this. This item was included in the first quarter operating budget amendment. It was my oversight in not including it in a CFP amendment at that time, so I apologize for that. The second item we have tonight in the CFP amendment is in the parks CFP, and that's the skate park replacement. The adopted CFP had that at $500,000 in 2024, and that was made up of a combination of grants and contributions. There was a very exciting grassroots effort earlier this year that accelerated and increased the, the amount of contributions for that project that allowed us to actually pull that project into the current timeframe in 2022. So, we're looking to increase that budget to 900,000, and that'll be made up primarily of contributions at 800,000 and 100,000 in REIT as part of the city's contribution. So, those are the two items, and again, public hearing is required, but then the ordinances for both the CFP and the operating budget will be a little bit later tonight. Thank you.
Okay, because it is a public hearing, I'll offer to the members of the public if anybody wishes to comment on this one. Okay, nothing online and nothing seen here in City Hall, so that means I can close the public hearing at this time, and council, any questions for Mr. Hoagland, or we'll catch, or we can catch him later on the ordinance? All right, sounds like we'll move on to the other business then, and we'll, we'll revisit this here shortly on the ordinance. Moving on to 8A, this is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recipient presentation. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council and the audience. So, this evening, we have Shaleen Rathkoff with us. She represents the Whidby Island Race Week, and she is going to be giving us a presentation on the success of the race week, and I'm sure that during that timeframe, everybody noticed all the people in town, especially at the restaurants and the taverns. It was a very busy week. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Shaleen Rathkoff. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you so much for that introduction, and thank you, Mayor Miller, for having me and council and public. We are so thrilled to be here in Anacortes, and I would like to just take a little bit of time to give you a little bit of a background on what Race Week is, and then take any of your questions about how we can make it a wonderful event for the city of Anacortes. So, beginning in 1983, Race Week started out in Oak Harbor, which is where it's lived for about 36 years. 2023 marks our fourth decade going into Race Week, which pulls together the region's top sailboat racers all over the area, between Canada, Oregon, Washington. We bring in a wonderful array of race officers who manage a race course for One Design and PHRF Racing. In 2019, we ended our stretch in Oak Harbor. We made some decisions to find a new venue due to some lack of dredging that was happening in the channel going into the marina. We needed to find a deep-water marina where we could continue to produce this great event, and Anacortes really fit the bill. Between the port of Anacortes and all the folks down at the marina at Cap Sante, the Chamber of Commerce, of course, you, the city of Anacortes with your LTAC grant program, we were really able to bring this event into Anacortes and start rebranding it as the region's most sought-after sailboat event. So, it's very exciting for me to share these pictures with you. These were all shot just last month, out on the shore, northeast shores of Glamis Island, which is where we've set up our race course. The, the city of Anacortes has just welcomed our event with full support. It's been wonderful. We brought in Rockfish, who opened a beer garden, and as a result of that, they were able to do a donation to the Anacortes Family Center. So, there's a lot of good things happening. We've also brought in artists, Anacortes artists, who have created our, our trophies, and we've used the imaging that they've created custom for Race Week in our merchandising and in our advertising. So, these are very fun pictures for me to share. It was a very big change for us, obviously, to move from Oak Harbor to here, and so much of our effort in the last two years have been about rebranding the event from Whidby Island Race Week to Race Week Pacific Northwest. But what I have found in these last two years is that I've done a really good job with bringing Anacortes into the mix, that social media, most of the players that are involved in Race Week are now referring to it as Anacortes Race Week. So, I feel like there's been some great success with our branding and our continued advertising, both through traditional print media, as well as specifically targeting the hardcore, active racer in the Pacific Northwest. People are now referring to this as Anacortes Race Week, so we're very delighted about that. I have a couple of little things I'm going to share with the, the council here in the committee, and I'm going to also leave behind some of our merchandise so that you can all take something home, just to show you the, the level of, of merchandising that we've been doing with the city, so. So, in 2021, we hired Terry McDonald, who is a wonderful artist here in Anacortes. She created our first custom piece to promote Race Week Anacortes, and her image was on display all over the region through all the 48 North and Northwest Yachting Magazine drop locations. So, this particular painting was then awarded to our overall winner of the event at the end, which was brilliant. In 2022, we brought on Jennifer Baumann, who is also an Anacortes artist, who custom made a beautiful print for us to do the same thing. We gave this to our overall winner of the event, and of course, we used the image for all of our promotion. So, these two posters, we're both really proud of because I, I really wanted to get Anacortes artists involved, and they both hit it out of the park. So, those were great. Now, in using those images, we created all of our merchandise using the images from the paintings, and the, the actual merchandising for this event, it's interesting because sailboat racers are a very unique breed, and to find them, you have to go to their place of business, which is basically the water. And what we do in terms of our merchandising is create a wonderful lineup of items that we know they're going to wear, and you see this all over the place, and people start asking about Race Week. And because of the change-up, it's been really interesting these last two years. People are curious about the new venue. What's it like? Is it as good as Penn Cove? Are there places to go? And now that people have seen it for two years, they are just stoked because there's so much within walking distance to the marina, and there's places, good places to stay and great places to eat. So, all of our merchandising is, is done really, really well. These are all SPF protected shirts so that people can wear them while they're sailing. And this was this year's artwork with Jennifer Bowman's piece on it there. In addition to the merchandising, sailors all, when they go into a regatta the size of Race Week, there are traditions of hanging mass flags, which you probably have seen down at Cap Sante. As the sailors have come in, they hang all of their previous Race Week flags, and I have to say, you guys, this last year, I had the whole group at our skippers meeting before the start of the event, and I said, okay, how many here, and there's hundreds of people, how many people here have been to one Race Week? And almost everybody raised their hand. And then I said, okay, so, how many people here have been to five Race Weeks? Keep your hand up. So, a couple of hands dropped down. You can see where this is going. By the time we got to 30 Race Weeks, consecutive Race Weeks, there were still six skippers standing up. So, it sort of speaks to the volume of dedication and love that people have with this particular event. They just love it. And this was this year's mass flag here. So, we're very grateful for the LTAC funding. What it allowed us to do really was run a series of, of wonderful full-page print ads in 48 North, which is a wonderful publication for a sailor. It's It's the region's most read magazine for sailboat racers. So we ran a series of full page ads. We ran a digital campaign, all in an effort to rebrand Whidby Island Race Week, Race Week Pacific Northwest, which as I said, is now Anacortes Race Week. So I think we've done a really good job and I really do appreciate the city's support of the event. I'm happy to take any questions that anybody might have about the event.
Well, thank you very much, Shaleen, and I, it's fantastic. Race Week Pacific Northwest is great and we will still welcome our friends from Oak Harbor, but I'm okay if sometimes it gets misidentified as Anacortes Race Week. That's just fine and we hope to have a, you know, a 30-year-plus partnership as well. But with that, counsel, any questions or? Mr. Young and then Ms. Cleveland.
Just really, the pitches are extraordinary. They really are. And when this, Mr. Meesmer was presenting, I'm the new chair of the LTAC committee, and when this was coming forward, it was just a superb thought. The symbiotic relationship to Anacortes is just, from a branding perspective and even an opportunity perspective, I honestly could not have thought of a better fit. And from what I've seen and heard, it has been superb. So bravo. I do, will agree with the mayor, I, you know, kind of have an affinity for the Anacortes Race Week, but you know, we will work with whatever branding you come up with. But I just really want to say, the city is so ready. I think it's a wonderful fit. Look forward to seeing what we become together in this whole process and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for coming and kind of giving a recap of this event and then also how our LTAC dollars are working. It's always nice to hear that. I saw some of you, some of your group on the docks in the marina and you guys seemed like you were always having a good time. People were super friendly, courteous. I wanted to be on a sailboat. I don't know what I'm doing, but it looked, it was, it was really neat. And I think the other thing that if folks aren't aware of, this is actually a Monday through Friday event. The majority of our kind of tourist events happen on the weekend. So this is great for hotels and the rest of the community. So thank you for kind of featuring that as a Monday through Friday.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Yeah, people like it. We've tried a few different iterations over the years and I've been involved with this event for well over 20 years now of running it, say, a Wednesday through Sunday or four days versus five, but people love the five-day format and they love the bookends of the weekends for their deliveries. So it's worked out really well to do a Monday through Friday event and we have no intention of changing it. So many people build their summer vacations around this event that we're just not going to touch and mess with it. We're just going to keep making it bigger, better. Ultimately, right now, it's a big boat regatta. Ideally, in the future, we could expand off the northeast shores of Glamis Island and run some smaller youth sailing, you know, entry level to get people who are just new to sailing into the sport. Racing at this level is really not a beginner experience. The people that are racing in this regatta are experienced, active racers. So I, I would like to see a place in Race Week someday where we're really bringing in that component of introducing the sport to a populace that has never seen it before. So we'll continue to work with that and continue to work with the Coast Guard on getting the permits required to race in multiple circles around the area. But Cap Sante, I have to say, between Brad Johnson and Dan Warratt Port, they've just been 100% committed to this and are so excited and easy to work with. So we're, we're more than thrilled and we'll just keep it going. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions for me?
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm going to leave a bunch of goodies for you guys, so look for those.
Okay, we are on to item 8B, second quarter finance update. And coming up back to the podium, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. So I'll do a quick finance update. This is through June, so halfway, halfway through the year. These charts should all look familiar, so I'll go through this pretty quickly. Please just let me know if you have questions or comments as we go through this, but this, this first chart here is a look at the major tax revenues snapshot mid-year. Property taxes, utility tax and sales tax are three largest tax revenue streams. Property tax is at 50, so kind of thinking of halfway through the year, all things being equal, you'd expect those revenue streams to be at about 50%. Property taxes generally come in the largest tranches twice a year in May and November, so slightly over half. Utility tax is a little bit over half and sales tax, a little bit over half. And sales tax, you'll remember, our biggest months are the summer months, so seeing it 50% at June, we're actually ahead of schedule and we'll talk more about these major revenue streams in a little bit. So sales tax, we, sales tax has been exceeding budget expectations every month so far this year. So you can see the, the total here, we're at 29.7% above what we had budgeted for that revenue stream. The major segments are, continue to be the marine trades, vehicles, building, hospitality and the electronic retail platforms. This next slide is the same data, just a different chart, aligned chart, easier to see the history of the last several years. This TBD sales tax, that's the Transportation Benefit District, two tenths of 1% sales tax approved by the voters that goes into our roads. The green line here is the current year. Affordable housing, so one tenth sales tax approved by the voters for affordable housing means. I wanted to point one thing out here. You'll see the, the credit we get back from the state. What we found out this last month was there is a cap on that credit. It's a formula that goes back to the historical collections of Anacortes sales tax, so we hit that cap and my understanding is that once we start the new year with the state, which is July 1st, then that will, we'll start getting that tax credit again. Utility tax, reminder that we have two segments of utility tax. Private utilities, which is electricity, natural gas, phone, cable TV and commercial solid waste. This has been a revenue stream that's been pretty stagnant or declining for the last several years. You can see this year so far, we have been exceeding budget, budgeted expectations pretty much across the board. At this point, we're about 11 and a half percent above what we had expected in terms of a revenue budget and that's due to the increases in natural gas and electricity costs so far this year. Same data. Public utility tax, that's utility tax on the city utilities. This has been growing pretty much consistently for the last several years. This month, you can see. Apologize, counsel, got a bit of a frog. You see the decrease compared to the same month last year, 7.3% decrease. So I believe that's as a result of the hot weather we had early in the summer last year. You can see in all segments across the board, commercial, residential and our wholesale customers were all down compared to last year. That's in water consumption and it shows up here in our utility tax. Same data. And this is our combined utility tax receipts. So the two, those two segments combined, we're still exceeding budgeted expectations by 13.6%, so performing very well to this point. It's the same data, line chart. So moving on to the building permits, this is interesting. So halfway through the year, this line down here, I put in a blue font. This is going back and looking at June, January through June revenues for each of those years. And you can see we're at 404,000 this year and that exceeds every year except for 2017, when we had this huge month when we sold a building permit to the, for the high school project. So building revenues, very strong, 44 permits for single family, multifamily or commercial permits for new builds this year so far. So building still strong. REIT, real estate excise tax, this is a tax that's assessed on the sale of a home and there's two quarter percents that are assessed on the sale. And you can, same thing down the bottom line here, this is January through June each of these past years and you can see that 730,000, looking back at the previous years, last year was the only year we collected more revenue during those months. What's interesting is when you, this next chart shows the amount of REIT collected against the number of home sales through that, through that period, January through June. So you can see in 2022, the first six months, there's been 189 home sales and that compares to 240 last year, 196 in 2020, the COVID year, and then over 200, 230, 240 each of those previous years. So I believe this is a result of the increasing interest rates, mortgage rates increasing. This is the first indication of a slowdown that we've seen, has not shown up in the revenue stream yet, but it appears that the housing market may be slowing a little bit.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Mr. Hoagland, thank you. Very quick question on this. Yeah, I think the numbers being down may, may be attributed to that. I notice also though, the REIT charge per sale is significantly up 24%. That, the REIT tax itself is a percentage of the sale price, right?
That's correct. It's a, yeah, REIT 1 and REIT 2, it's a quarter percent each.
Okay. So quantities are down, but the actual, like, sold values are actually significantly up.
That's right. Yeah, if you look at this REIT, this row called REIT per sale, so on average, a real estate transaction this year has generated $3,864 per transaction. Last year was 3,110. Yeah, and you can see kind of the decreasing rates, but yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of other questions, but I'll let you finish first.
Brings us down to lodging tax. Lodging tax continues to be strong throughout the first six months of the year, comparing favorably with what we've seen last year. This is just a look at, it's that same, same chart, looking at revenues and expenditure budget versus revenue and expenditure actuals. I will point out this, the original packet that was published, there was an error in the expenditure total in the general fund. There was about 600,000 more that should have been eliminated from that total, so apologize for that. We did republish the packet on Friday, but this expenditures exceeding revenues at this point by 3.3 million in the general fund, that's actually tracking right along where we would expect it to be supporting, continuing to support the fiber backbone build out. Looking down through the rest of these funds, parks, cemetery, library, all rely heavily on property tax. That's why their revenues are slightly higher than that 50% mark. All expenditures tracking pretty evenly though. Some of these other funds, like the street maintenance and street construction, as we get further into those projects, will make REIT transfers into those funds and grant drawdowns that will bring those, those figures more in line with budgeted figures. Washington Park continues to be really strong, collecting 73% of budgeted revenues at this point. I'll just, I'll drop down, I'll point out on the ambulance fund, revenues and expenditures both exceeding, both exceeding budget. It's nice to see revenues exceeding by more than what the expenditures are exceeding, but that's, that fund is quite healthy at this point, performing very well. I wanted to drop down to the utilities and point out the, these little boxes off to the side of water, sewer and storm drain. All three of these funds, the water, sewer and storm fund have large amounts of capital that are collected, so we break out this charge and that's what the CHGS stands for, charges. So it's charges for service to our customer base to try and, try and assess where we're at on a consumption basis for those funds versus capital and shows that we're, we're tracking very well on all of those. So all of that to say that everything at this point, meeting or exceeding expectation and be happy to try and answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you. Mr. Hoagland. Mr. McDougal, are you ready for your questions?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned, you know, the sales tax being up and there's kind of the leading five categories of sales tax. Do you know, like, were any of those sort of up in an outlier kind of way, like abnormally up, or are they all just kind of consistently, what, like 5, 6% above?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a good question. One thing that we saw during, I'll get back after that sales tax chart. One thing we saw during COVID was the electronic platforms, you know, the online sales really took off and much to my enjoyment, those have remained at a, at a high level. So that's, that's been nice to see that those online sales have remained strong even post, kind of the post-quarantine eras now. But other, other than that, everything is, you know, we've always had those strong sectors in the marine vehicles, hospitality and construction. You know, construction fluctuates, obviously, but, but yeah, other than the online sales continuing to be pretty strong, everything else has been pretty consistent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, the marine sales in particular, the last couple of months have been very significant, boat and boat yacht and marine related services.
The other one was, yeah, the private utilities, phone and cable are, are down a bit, but overall private utility is up. Are phone and cable, like if you were to pie chart, the four of them, they represent probably like less than a quarter of the overall. Is that a reasonable assessment?
Yeah, good question. So I think, I think that's, I think that's right. So natural gas and electricity do make up the majority of those categories. Yeah, by a, by a pretty wide margin.
That's what I thought, yeah. So as, as we, we'll probably continue to see phone and cable dwindle, it's, it's not a big hit to that, to that particular pie chart, to the public or the private utility pie chart, especially if the, the others are kind of growing as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. I always enjoy these presentations, especially when there's so much good news in them. I was wondering about the ACFL Management Fund. I see it's a low percentage and does that have to do with quarry revenue?
Yes, excellent, excellent question. Thank you. That's, that's exactly right. So Fund, Fund 113, the, that ACFL fund, the city had a contract with Lakeside to Harvest Rock out of the quarry and the city received quarterly payments for that. That contract is now completed, so we don't have any more revenues from that contract specifically coming into the ACFL fund. It does have a quite healthy fund balance at this point, I think over 400,000. So there's, you know, there's enough cash there to support it for, you know, several years, but.
So do we have anything that we, that might replace that contract moving forward?
I understand that, that there's been some discussions about revisiting that, but I don't have any other details, so I apologize.
No, that's okay. So that, but that is the main, that is the main revenue, has been the main revenue source.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I know at least maybe the planning committee or has looked at, understand, or at least have been presented the fact that Lakeside has run out of its authorized. at least have been presented the fact that Lakeside has run out of its authorized mining area. So there are some, there are some options for counsel to take a look at in, in that area. Other than that, that's, those are the correct numbers. All right, any other questions for Mr. Hoagland, or we'll let him move on to the ordinances? All right, Mr. Hoagland. Oh, and I'm sorry, these are open for public comment? Any members of the public wish to make a comment on these? Okay. 8C.
I apologize, I don't remember which one was first.
I have 4027 amending the 2022-2027 CFP.
Okay, perfect.
You would think we would go 26 to 27, but 27 is first.
So these are the items we took a look at during the public hearing. So just identifying in the wherewithal is those two projects, 32nd and M, and those related grant and impact fee amounts, and the skate park project and the related amounts, 800,000 in contributions and 100,000 in, in REIT funding. So those two items, if you adopt this CFP amendment, would have been those two, those two elements of the CFP, transportation and parks at 1.6 and 900,000. The second item, if you'd like to take a look at both those in conjunction, the wherewithal is just refer back to each of these elements. I'll try and go through these clearly, but here's the, the skate park down in this section in 108, Fund 108, at 900,000, 800,000 in contributions, and 100,000, the transfer into parks is from REIT. So there's a 100,000 transfer out of REIT and 100,000 transfer into parks. The other elements related to, the first two, body cam, progress payment, and less lethal tools, those are both in the police department that had grants to pay for those items that allowed progress payments over several years. So that's just incorporating those into the, into the budget. Open GOV, something we've talked about a number of times, but the first-year subscription fee and one-time implementation fee total about $95,000. Those are not currently in the budget. And the last item is EMS overtime. I do want to point out, I did, I did edit this budget amendment as well. I apologize for the confusion. When I first put the budget amendment together, I had an edit to the fiber department, and it was pretty significant, four, four to five million dollars in, in edits. After, after it came out and had further conversations with the mayor and staff, decided to pull that, just knowing that moving forward through the rest of the year, there were going to be other things that, that came up that we'd want to address. And in the next couple of months, we'll probably have a much more clear idea of what that final number is going to look like. So we decided to go ahead and pull that item, and that's why it's not included in this, this version. But the last item here, the EMS overtime at 150,000, I know some of you are aware the challenges that the fire EMS department has been going through with staffing, so the, the, there's been a number of open positions that they've just been forced to fill through overtime, so that overtime budget is, has been, has been, has exceeded what we initially budgeted for that. As you may remember, though, back looking at that EMS fund during the presentation, the EMS fund is quite healthy and able to absorb this with no trouble at all. So those two items, those two ordinances for the CFP and the operating budget, happy to answer any questions or...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hoagland. And I know I've communicated at least to everybody on council about the, the fiber and the, and the other pieces of the puzzle to come together, so that was part of the reason why, you know, trying to guess at what that adjustment might be seemed a little premature until we know what those other pieces are, what those costs are going to be. And then as far as the overtime, we are getting healthy as far as our staffing in the fire department again, so it shouldn't be a major issue moving forward. But other questions for Mr. Hoagland? You, you wowed them then, so now, now I, now I will entertain a motion on either 4027 or 4026.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
I would start with, I move to approve ordinance 4027 amending the 2022 to 2027 CFP.
Second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Carter to amend ordinance for, to approve ordinance 4027 amending the 2022-2027 CFP. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mayor Miller?
Oh, Mr. Walters, sorry.
Sorry, just before, just before the vote, I'm okay with the ordinance as presented. However, this one's very straightforward. There are just two items amending the CFP, and it seems to me that in the future, a different format for the amendments might be required if the amendments are more complicated. Here, you know, fairly straightforward and simple, but it might be important for us in the future to specify where the money is coming from. We might want to ensure more control over that because there's a statute that requires capital budget decisions be made in concomitance with the CFP. But for now, I don't mean to throw a wrench into things, but for the future, maybe more, more detail on project amendments.
Got it. Concur. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Heebic?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath?
Yes.
Bush cares.
Okay, thank you. And now ordinance 4026, counsel.
Mayor Miller?
And Ms. Heebic?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 4026 amending the 2022 operating budget.
Second. Okay, a motion by Ms. Heebic, second by Mr. Carter to, for approve 4026, second quarter budget amendment. Any discussion? Sorry, I forgot that part last time. Mr. Franciac, call for the vote, please.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Heebic?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Bush cares.
Okay, thank you. No further business. Before the council, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.